I will begin by calling the board for the planning board. Alden Clark.
Here.
Estelina.
Yeah.
Doug Coop.
Here.
Jenny Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Yeah.
Richard Baker.
Here.
Don Walters is absent tonight. So on our agenda, as you can see on the screen, we actually only have one major item on the agenda tonight. We have the continued public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment for short-term rentals. There's just general business after that. So the only, the majority of the time tonight will be spent on that. And the way I would like to do this is to open it up first to public comment. And then the board can decide at that point, after all the public comment is done, whether it wishes to close the public hearing and move on to deliberations. After, however we do that, I would then want to ask the board members individually to speak to their opinions on the proposed ordinance and any issues that they see and would like to have addressed. And once we've gone through a round of that, I will try to go through the entire ordinance, item by item, see if we can get to a point where we can make a recommendation to the city council. Any questions from the board about that? That sounds like a good plan. Then in that case, I will open up the meeting for public comment. Again, if you can come to the podium, speak into the microphone, give your name and address, and please let me know comments to the two minutes. Please step up.
Well, Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. First, a correction and second, a question. So the correction is, I sent you a letter and in it I suggested that you would be, that there would be some new parking ordinances before you. And then I realized they're under Chapter 13, so they're part of a general ordinance. So I don't think they will. But given the careful look that you gave the ITIF zoning proposal, there are ordinances you might be interested in, even if you're not going to hear them. The question I have, and I, you know, I made in my letter, I made, I think, enough statements. But the question is, and I've had this question for every ordinance that's been drafted, is why is, why do we not tie bedrooms to occupancy? So you can go today on the Airbnb or Revo and there's, you can see Homes in Newburyport. There's one on Kent Street where it's one bedroom and they're renting to four or five people. And I don't think that's the intention of saying you can have up to three bedrooms, up to six people, or up to one bedroom, up to two people. Do we really mean you can have one bedroom and six people? I mean, that just, it doesn't make sense to me. So I was wondering why it's written that way? And if the reason is that we can't limit occupancy per bedroom, seems to me we could. But it seems like that would be a good thing to do in this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'm sure you know this, but this is not our proposed ordinance coming to us. We're reviewing it. It's a good point.
Right, but you get to ask questions. You might get answers to.
I understand. Okay, somebody else.
Mary Creachy, also known as Kitty, 232 High Street. Considering the weather and underwater circumstances, we will allow strews in our community. We need to address the issue holistically. We cannot separate the zoning decision, which is before us, from the issues of licensing and enforcement. To do otherwise is like accepting a job offer without knowing the job description or the salary or the other benefits. And I ask that you not close this public hearing if that's going to start the 90-day clock. I think we need more time to get public involved in this. Furthermore, I don't think we should even consider allowing strews unless we have the resources and commitment from the city to manage them. So far, they haven't done a very good job of enforcing our regulations now. I don't know why that would change. And I think licensing fees should be high enough to cover the cost of enforcement like parking does. There can be good reasons to want strews. However, there's no reason to let them operate in such a way as to disturb our neighborhoods and disrupt the fabric of our community. First and foremost, I do not think we should allow investor-owned units within our residential zones, including R3. Second, we limit the concentration of strews in any one street or neighborhood to both protect the social fabric of our community and to reduce the stress on already scarce parking. Third, I think we should establish and enforce regulations designed to maintain our quality of life. These can be such measures as restricting types of activities, hours of operations for some activities, and establishing parking protections for our permanent residents. Fourth, I think we require onsite presence of either the owner or their qualified registered agent, who is required to familiarize their guests with the rules of neighborhood code of conduct and is available 24/7 to address complaints promptly and effectively. ... regulations by imposing meaningful fines and revoking licenses for repeat offenders. We need to make sure we've gotten sufficient incentives for the strews to self-regulate if we want this to work. Also, I think we need to build contingency plans. We start with a pilot program in which any new strew is only allowed to start operating for one year. And after that one year, if they haven't had any issues, then we can renew. Local governments have an obligation to safeguard and protect the interests of their residents. Do this right, protect our neighborhoods and our housing stock by keeping it small, local, and well-managed, so that we can welcome strews rather than resent them. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Mr. Baker.
Good evening. Rita Mahalik, 53 Warren Street. I didn't prepare anything, so do my best off the top of my head. But the last meeting I was at for strews, I came out of it and I said, just everything Kitty said, it's incomplete. It was well-intentioned, but there's nothing we could really grasp to think that this was going to be anything of benefit to the residents in our communities and to enhance it. So I thought, it's incomplete what you're doing unless you get those other parts of the puzzle, the enforcement, the verifications, and how it's going to run. So you keep giving us ordinances without giving us the operation. And I don't even know if there's a study done to show whether the cost of doing all this is going to be offset by what everybody's so excited about, the taxes and all the money we're going to get from it. I think that's a myth myself, but I don't know. So my thought was, why don't you do it in two phases? You need to get something in on Plum Island. So technical Plum Island as a phase one, write the ordinances, get all the puzzle, get how you're going to enforce it, how you're going to collect, how you're going to register, how you're going to do everything, get the complete pie, show it to us, get it working. Then come in and consider the mainland and then build that in. Then until you have that, ban it in the mainland. Because I really think you need to put your thinking hat on again and say, how can we merge? How can we have this conviction and the intention to have affordable housing and not kick it down, kick that can down the street again by opening up STRUs in such an absurd free economy that it's just going to kill us? So we need, put it in Plum Island. They want it, they need it, get it working there. And then do the mainland and have it pretty darn strict in my book, so that it's what Kitty said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kent Swanton, Kent Tremont Street. I'm also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I spoke last time. At the risk of repeating myself, whatever the issues are with STRUs, we have a lot of them in the city. And I think it's good for the city to have an ordinance about them because they exist. And it's, I think it's good to have an ordinance. And at the risk of repeating myself, I just want to indicate that we discussed it at the Zoning Board of Appeals. In this proposed ordinance, we're asked to rule on, with a special permit, on whether STRUs in the residential district, in the R3 to be specific. And it's hard for some of us to imagine how, given our criteria that is given to us in this proposed ordinance, would be, is this STRU more detrimental to the neighborhood than not an STRU? Many of us are like, well, of course, it's going to be more detrimental to the neighborhoods. So I think it's unlikely, if this passes the way it's written, that you'll see a lot of STRUs in the residential district if you're leaving out those to the side. I think I made that point last time, but just to be absolutely clear. But I do think we need something because they exist. Go to BBRO, go anywhere, they're all over the place. And it's kind of a festering thing and something needs to be sorted out. So anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Want to speak?
I agree with him.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to the board at this point. How do you feel, what happens about, whether you want to keep the public hearing open or close it? The difference is, obviously, is the, you know, we're not going to come up with a new ordinance because we already have a common, the ordinance has been referred to us by the city council. But the difference is, from that point of view of closing that closing, is when the 90-day period starts within which the city council has to act. So if we were to close the public hearing tonight, the city council would have to act by August 3rd. If we waited another two weeks, the city council would have to act. Any thoughts about how to proceed at this point before getting into a discussion of merit of the ordinance?
From my point of view, I don't think we're going to, I'm not sure we're going to have any change of opinion over the course of two weeks based on the feedback we've given and based on our review. So I'm not sure that open the call would benefit us.
So if we close it, then what, does that turn out exactly, the city council would need to?
If we close the public hearing, the city council needs to act within 90 days.
So they would need to vote on?
On one way or the other, on something with, on some aspect of the ordinance before us within 90 days.
Are they, do we want to put pressure on the city council by closing the public hearing? Or did they?
At some point, we have to close the public hearing.
Right, what I mean?
So the question is, do we do it this week? Two weeks? Do we do it the first week in June? It's really just a question of when we do it. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other. I just want to get a sense of how the board feels about, again, getting the public comment. I'll take a motion either to close the public hearing or to continue. Yes, Heather.
Okay, so just for clarification.
Could you turn up the volume? It's very hard to hear.
Is this better? All right, so if we close public hearing and that 90-day clock starts, it means that in city council even, like no revisions can be made? It has to be this draft as is or no?
No. If we close the public hearing, the city council can do whatever it wants with this ordinance as long as they stick to the basic, the general approach of the ordinance. If they came up with a totally new ordinance, they would have to come back to the public hearing.
And is there sort of like a scale of so many changes made that it comes back to us? Like, or is it sort of like trust?
I don't know, I can't leave that to you.
I'll just say that there's no obligation to come back to the board, like Rick said, unless there's some sort of something of deviation of the subject matter or it turned out to be advertised again, back to the proposal. Then the intention is really that the board is able to provide a recommendation for whatever proposal was brought forward. It can be negotiated, so as between the board and the city council, whether it makes sense to have different revised versions or iterations going back and forth. I think I commented last meeting that just because we had already seen two-year process and not actually, they've identified yet the ordinances. I think we've seen the range of issues, some of us who've been here, we have seen four range of issues, neighbor issues, and what can be addressed. I'm not necessarily convinced in more time, you know, would benefit us. I think we need to get recommendations. But it's up to the board here, I think, really up to what time you need to get any further inputs, whether it's revised, comments. I, my decision is, I feel like if I heard all those comments in areas of interest and concern and now need to be weighed, it's something I'd like to work on, the city council. But we've also already just wanted over the record to, just for your consideration, it's not necessarily, you know, for you, but the sponsor has asked for feedback as to if you're able to do that. Possibly closing out tonight and being able to provide a recommendation. Whether you're able to provide a recommendation tonight is also, you know, certain senses. We had, I think it was Councilor Polly, we worked in the last, back in the last meeting. He had noted the fact that, you know, cycle and because they still have a lot of things there. I think you had a reference for the plant work to do more time, at least to make sure that they are, I think, given as much of that 90 days as possible for work with, such that I think the intent there might be that if you close the public hearing, hopefully you're able to issue a recommendation out of that same night or sooner or after, so that the council has really as much of that 90 days as possible for work with, given that they might have their own maybe.
So again, let's go a little bit deeper into detail, just to know. So there's some certain points to this that are detailed, that, like hot topics, let's say 120 days, parking, things like that, those types of things, could those change and city council not come back?
That's correct. Generally speaking, there is, I mean, there is case law essentially on how, you know, where that might have crossed, but generally speaking, yes, all these different parameters could be adjusted one way or another, 120 days, 90 days, et cetera, things like that. As long as it's about a substance that we give entirely different focus from topic for the whole year, that would really have to be something to come back and certainly reflect something like that. But they would have a lot of latitude to change it. Regardless of whether or not all the recommendations are included or not, it could be changed.
And I would say the point of this process, this is, this again is Councilor Zee's proposal. And the point of this process is for us to make recommendations about that. So we could make a rec, you know, assuming, assuming we close the hearing tonight and voted tonight, we could make a, we could make a recommendation if that were, I'm not saying that's sets the board, but for example, we could make a recommendation to reduce the 120 days to 30 days. Then that recommendation would go to the city council. The city council does not have to follow that recommendation. And even if we didn't make that recommendation, it could do that up the road. So it's, state law just requires us to review the proposed ordinance and to make a report with recommendations to the city council and then, you know, after we've closed the public hearing. So if we, if we close the public hearing tonight, we might be able to get to a vote tonight. I don't know. If we put it off, we might be able to get to a vote on the, on the next meeting, the 17th or whatever it is. So we can't actually make that recommendation until we're closed. So I guess, I guess my question is, how close do you feel with the board? You know, we don't know at this point. Do you feel like we're getting close to a point of having enough information to make a recommendation? Or do you think we still need to be talking about it for one or two more meetings?
I guess I think that this all feels very preliminary to me. I don't feel like there's been very much discussion at all about this in this context or with the public. There are a lot of pieces, as, you know, some of the comments reflect tonight, that haven't been talked about at all, particularly enforcement. So I think there's a lot more to be discussed and a lot more to the recommendations that we've meant to the council that could be far more comprehensive if we had a little bit more time to really talk about. So I just, I don't think we're ready to make a recommendation based on how much we've been putting by the books so far.
Okay. That's, I think, a different question as to whether we need to keep the public hearing. That's about our discussion, as opposed to public hearing. But if you feel like we need to keep the public hearing?
I think along with that, keep the public hearing in order to solicit it.
So, so in conclusion of this meeting, that's the, that's the sense of the board. It's anybody with strong opinions. To the contrary, we will continue, we will have our discussion tonight, as long as we can, and then continue the public hearing to the next people. I do want to think, I do think we have enough information tonight to have a very thorough discussion. So I don't think this is going to be a short, this is going to be a long meeting, unless I'm surprised. So I guess with that, then, we'll just move on from that. And I would just ask each of you to kind of give me a, give me and the rest of the board a summary of where you stand at this point, what the key issues that you think are. And then I would like to go through item by item in the ordinance to get to each of these points. You know, try to, try to cover every, and if we, if there are major issues that, that we have disagreement on, we will just put it off for a couple more weeks. Does that sound good to everyone? Okay, great. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't even look over my shoulder, Richard. All right, do you have any comments on that discussion?
Nope, it all sounds good.
So I'll just open it up for each of the members to just kind of highlight where they think this ordinance is at this point and what they see are the key issues that, you know, A, is the ordinance at all going in the right direction? And then B, if it's generally going in the right direction, what are some of the major issues? Whoever wishes to go first, move to first.
Okay. So from my point of view, I do think we need an ordinance in place just because of, like some of the comments earlier tonight, there are lots of them here. They are technically illegal in the city, given, given the current zoning ordinances. So I think we do need to address that and have an ordinance. And so I think, I think we do need some regulation in place. This proposed ordinance, in my view, is, I guess it's a pretty fair compromise between some of the earlier versions that we've seen. I think it's, I think it is trying to balance some of the different issues. I'm not sure that they've been completely balanced yet, but I think that's, that is the attempt. And so I think it's a good, a good attempt at that. In my mind, I do see really three main issues. And that's, first, where, which zones they're allowed in. Number two, the parking requirements associated with them. And number three is the enforcement aspect of it. So just, just to further elaborate on those, my, my view with looking at the owner-occupied STRUs, if those are allowed in the R1, R2, and R3 zones, I raised the point before where I thought that was unfair to some of the other homeowners in the agricultural conservation areas or even the WMD, WMU regions. My concern there is treating the citizens of the city fairly, where you're giving rights to certain ones and not others. For example, if it's left as is, there'd be houses on Warner Street where they'd be allowed on one side of the street and not on the other side of the street. And I think that's unfair. My recommendation for that is for them to adjust the zones, not necessarily to allow it in the conservation areas. But they don't seem to be interested in adjusting the zones to be fair. So I'm concerned about that. Secondly, with the parking requirements, I guess I can support the parking requirements that are, that are stated here. Yeah, that's a tough balancing one. I think that's a big issue. I was disappointed that we didn't hear more about that from the city councils at the last meeting because they're the ones that get the feedback from the residents as far as parking. I don't, I don't get that, so I'm not really sure where that stands. But I do know that we have heard comments from the residents at the hearing about that. So that is a concern. I think, again, the city needs to address some of those issues. For example, allowing overnight parking in the city lots in order to alleviate some of that problem. I haven't seen any discussion or movement on that, but again, so that's a concern, just the whole, whole parking situation. And then third, on enforcement, I think there definitely needs to be enforcement of the, of the ordinance. I do have concerns about that. I agree with Kitty that the city hasn't shown very much progress in enforcing the other ordinances. I'm not sure how strong they will be enforcing this one. So my view is if there's not going to be enforcement, we probably shouldn't bother having an ordinance. So I am concerned about enforcement, but again, that's up to the executive branch. And unless we can get the mayor here to give us information about how they're going to enforce it, I'm not sure where we, where we stand on that, or how we comment on that. But I am concerned about having enforcement. Those are the main issues I see.
Thank you.
Just bring us up to the next. I've actually been kind of in the middle of this one all along. I came in, I joined the board when the last one was, was supposedly kind of the finish line, but it didn't happen. I didn't express a lot of opinions, and because I think I, I never felt that there was going to be a perfect ordinance here. I do feel like, to the extent we have STRUs, a lot of us use them and be critical of the safety, ban them altogether, certainly they need to be regulated and everyone, I think agrees, there needs to be some moderation. I like the aspiration that someone from the public said about maybe increase the way we actually welcome them. That, I'd be a little ambitious, but that would be, that'd be great. So I, I think there should be some moderation here. But I do have, I think, I guess, a top three or four issues list that'd be good to get out. I, first of all, the re, and the reason I would also support continuing the hearing is, I, even Councilor Zee, as much as I admired him for tackling this and simplifying it and trying to find a middle-of-the-road solution, he acknowledges that, you know, there's a companion of these here, which is the licensing. And I don't, I know that's not our purview on many boards, but there's so much intertwined. It's hard to think of this in isolation. So I mean, I was thinking about continuing on the basis of asking more questions about the licensing. But I just think we need to know more about that. Can fees offset the cost of enforcement? How's that going to work? My second biggest concern, and they're all kind of interrelated, so they kind of circle back on each other. My biggest concern about strews generally is the, is how they displace, you know, affordable housing and rental stock in the city. And I think that's an important type of housing that we need. You know, I think everyone can, to the extent there are carve-outs for homeowners to do it for a small period of time, that's great. But to the extent we could have, you know, large quantities in the city, I think there's, there's got to be a limit. So circling back to the licensing, I'm thinking, well, it would be very difficult to put a cap on how many of these we have through zoning, but perhaps it could be done in licensing. So there again, I'm coming back to, I think, the licensing question. And then as it gets to some of the more technical questions, in parking in particular, I'm glad colleague Mr. Clark mentioned that, you know, to the extent that we're not allowed overnight parking in this lot, we still have other kind of technical issues kind of ahead of this in terms of some technical matters. So I think there's a lot more that we need to know about this. I don't think, it could actually lead to a final product that actually is very similar and equally simple, but there's still so much more questions to be asked and answered, I think, before, you know, we can, we can just send this off to start the 90-day clock. But I do think we also could ask a lot of good questions tonight and give a lot of really good feedback to the council as they continue to work on, in particular with licensing. And just to refresh my memory, maybe someone else will remember, I don't think they were planning to tackle licensing until after they got through this, but I don't know if anyone else happens to remember what was said about that.
My understanding, we hadn't talked about it the last couple of years. And generally speaking, the council had decided to put licensing off until this was addressed because I think the zoning, let's say, the zoning is a little bit more complicated. What caused it, what's the reason? So the sponsor, I think, had an incentive to break for the licensing, we should work on that afterwards. I think he's already picked up that word, but as you noted, you have, that's what I see. And I've heard of that. You could, and I said, because... Um, you could, and because there's no licensing, doesn't necessarily be comfortable for this board, uh, although you may allow that to be a little important. Um, they want to provide specific recommendations of things you think are important in there, so again, the force decided, we talked about. You know, the staffing, you know, assistance that would be needed, uh, to administer that license commission side, the funding, you know, side. Um, special recovery process for it and the enforcement aspect of it, you know, is, um, it's been pointed out before that the administration of the council will, you know, the council side of that enforcement. Um, but, um, but yeah, I think the sponsor is currently working on that, they don't currently have, they don't have any burden of that. Um, in the millions of the same burden essentially we saw, you know, last year.
So Andy, I guess, uh, let's follow up a minute. Two things, one, uh. The sponsor is bringing this forward as a zoning at first, with licensing afterwards, but. One would expect that the city council would take the money together, the city council would act on something without the licenses, is that your impression or?
Yes, I mean, technically, I guess it is possible that some of the, the, we're having a licensing somewhere, that'd be difficult in the context here to do so without knowing that the council, you know. Ultimately speaking, the council itself is comfortable with parameters of both, um, and up to the head, so it does make sense. I understand exactly what the zoning is being addressed for, that does make a lot of sense. Um, it's a primary area of, you know, land use regulation here in this context for this, but, um, the licensing used since last week too, uh, I do think it's necessary for that. Reach consensus and address related issues that we've all talked about in both of those, or on all the side of this.
I, I have, I'm not sure whether you finished it, Jay, just, just follow up, I, I'm not sure that I want to make this more complicated by trying to get any areas that are, under jurisdiction with licensing. We've got one six review page arguing in front of us here, make a recommendation on. And as you say, we could put into that, things that we think should be addressed in licensing, but. I don't, I don't think it's, it's helpful for us to try to grab more jurisdiction in here, you know, and. Uh, to go after something that's really something that wants to charge. Um, so I guess, I guess I. I thought as we talk about what needs to be in licensing, but I don't think we want to put this off until it's discussed again. So did you have anything else, Jamie, or else?
Also.
Uh, first of all, I want to say that I do think an ordinance is important, um, so I am for an ordinance to be had. Um, one of the points, the hundred and twenty days, I think is too lengthy, because I think it creates too much of a gray area within this ordinance. And I think it sort of negates some of the other points of, of keeping a sense of control, um, on time periods and whatnot. Um, and I think that that's an area where things could just sway and, and become challenging, even with a direct ordinance. With parking, um, I'm happy with what's here, but I also, I. I don't think that. S T R U's or not having S T R U's would actually change the parking in the report at all. Because I see firsthand long term residents who, um, you know, park on the street. You can't control that somebody has teenage kids and all of a sudden this family has four cars, three hundred and sixty five days out of the year. So I don't think that with or without S T R U's, parking in your report is going to change in, in any significant way. Um, I, I, I have a hard time with people. Going into this ordinance, hoping to see S T R U's shut down because they're, they're not qualified. With the hopes of affordable housing coming on the market. The word affordable and the word housing in your report really can't be put side by side, your report is not an affordable city. It's not going to become an affordable city, where we're selling properties at seven fifty and a thousand dollars a square foot. These properties will go on the market very high and they will be sold at a very high rate and the people in the population. That some people are hopeful would be allowed to have housing. It won't happen, it's, it's going to be a, a more expensive parking than people would imagine. So yes, there would be more inventory, but I don't see it as being quote unquote affordable, because those owners are going to do the best they can in the marketplace. And one comment I have that has just not felt good to me, it's not directly in this ordinance, but I asked it two weeks ago. The fact that there's no ordinance in place and the fact that therefore these are all illegal. I can understand that concept, but what does not feel good to me is that for however many years. Funds have gone through the websites, to the state and back to the city and are lying on it in the budget. Because what that tells me is we're putting money into our city that's illegal. And that concept does not feel good to me, so every time I hear the word illegal and I know that funds are being spent. To me, this, there's a problem in my mind and it doesn't clear out very easily. So I might just want to get that out there because it's, it, it's confusing to me, it's very confusing.
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
Um, so, I think that this proposal is helpful and so. In many ways, a good compromise, um. I agree that, I think it feels like parking in a way that is fairly manageable. Um. I agree that the. Owner occupied, um, that a hundred and twenty days may be longer than really is necessary, I know, um. You know, people have expressed some concern. Um, so I think bringing it down to something like ninety days, um, might be more reasonable, but I, I do think that. Those situations should be allowed, I know there was talk in the last meeting. Um, you know, people saying that there needed to be someone on site, I don't agree with that. I have. Used, um, short term rental units a lot when traveling and. I don't, I wouldn't use them if someone, if I was sharing a space with someone that, it's purpose to me, um, of the short term rental unit, so. Uh, you know, the proposals that somebody needed, owner needed to be there, I don't think it's necessary, I think in the licensing, there should be something. You know, that somebody's available twenty four hours, um, and can respond within an hour. Uh, I think that protects the residents, you know, along a lot of other things that should be in licensing, uh, in terms of enforcement. Um. I do have some concerns about the investor, um, own the properties, um. You know, I had expressed my concern last time about the people that are. Currently have invested properties that are being used to short term rental units and haven't had any issues, um. I just, you know, I know, yes, they're not legal, these people have set themselves up on something. Um, and should have known the law, but at the same time, I feel like they do provide. Short term rental units benefit the city, um, so I would still. Allow those, um. Units that have been in, that then operating to continue operating under some sort of special permit, um, for some period of time. Uh, and, but I do think that opening of the R three to investor. Units without, um, some sort of limit, likely to. A, the zoning board having a hard time, um, on the special permit criteria of proving them, um. Or B, there being too many, um, so I do think there needs to be some sort of, um. We need some special permit criteria and see if we can. Add something, add some criteria that, um, would allow some of them to operate, but perhaps some one hit number.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, yeah. I'm. I think, first of all, and, and, you know, I've kind of felt this way over the last year and a half as I have participated in these discussions. There, there's always this, um. Sense of inevitability of all of this, that we, we have to pass this because there are pressures in the market that require that we pass some. And I. I think. We do need to pass something, I'd say short term rental units are a reality. To me, it's a matter of scale and a matter of, of regulation. And, and I would also argue and put forth that, you know, to, to some of the points that were made in the public comment. You can't, you can't really go back, once, once you have passed an order. Uh, we, we are essentially grandfathering it under those guidelines. Uh, every, every short term rental unit that, that gets a license in that context. Uh, so if, if two years from now we determine that the parking is, is problematic, or we determine that a hundred and twenty days is problematic. The way I understand it, everyone that's grandfathered it and, and they have all the rights. So I would argue very strongly for a, a kind of careful incremental approval of this. Uh, I, I wouldn't disagree at all with the idea that, that we start with Plum Island. And, and expand from there because I, I think we have to be very careful about the impacts on, on the city generally and the neighborhoods. I would also argue very strongly that, um. Without some very clear funded strategy, staffed and funded strategy for enforcement. Um, this, this is a free role. And, and it, it just becomes an uncontrolled part, so I, I don't agree that we should pass. A zoning amendment without understanding very clearly what the structure of enforcement. I think that's fifty percent of the discussion and it really hasn't been talked about at all yet. So I think that, that's part of the reason why I think we're moving a little too quickly on this right now, we haven't talked about the other half of the difference. Um, so just, just talking about a couple of details, um, relative to the hundred and twenty days. I, I think what's happened here is in combining, um. Home share, limited share, owner adjacent units that, that are technically owner occupied units per the, the previous amendment proposal. In that previous proposal, there, there was, uh. I can't remember if it was thirty days or sixty days or ninety days, but there was an allowance. For someone who owned a single family house, who wanted to rent that house, um. It was an allowance for them to, to do that for a certain number of days during the year. And, you know, I believe it started out as thirty, it has grown down to a hundred and twenty, but it had to do with just that unit. You know, with an owner who couldn't be present because they were renting their house, they were going somewhere else. So there was a limitation of time put on that particular rental, so it didn't become, in essence, a kind of investor unit where the owner was never present. All of the other units, the limited share, the owner adjacent units where the owner could be present. The language in the previous amendment required that for an appointed representative to be present in one of the unit. And, and when you apply that a hundred and twenty days broadly to all of those unit types. You, you've created a situation where owners are not present, uh, very much at all for any of those unit types. And I think that's fundamentally different than where we have been on this over the past year and a half. And I, I would not support that broad, um, you know, allowance of, of time away. For all of the different unit types, I think there could be language added to this that says a hundred and twenty days only applies to single family houses that are under, like, how do, how do we want to say? So I, I think that's to me a fundamental problem, uh, that, that results from combining all of those, those unit types. Um, so in, in terms of parking, and, you know, we can, we can go around and around parking. Um, to me, there's, there's a function to the parking requirement that I think is very important. Because there, there is no language, it hasn't been any language in any of these proposals that limits the number of short term rental units that would be allowed in the city. And the parking requirement is, is a mechanism to, to regulate the number of units because it, it. It limits the number of units that, uh, that can meet that parking requirement. So I think it's important to say that there is a parking requirement, I still would advocate for a minimum of, of one off street parking space for, for any short term rental. Because I think it's important that, that we regulate the number of units that, that are allowed in the city. I think if you say, as, as Councilor Z said in our last meeting, you know, the first parking space is free. I think what's going to happen is all of a sudden everybody's going to have a one bed unit and they won't need to provide parking. So I, I just think that, that there's a function to the parking component of this that, that helps with the overall regulation. And, and I, I would argue that, that we need to really pay attention to that as the only way that we can regulate the, the total number of units that are licensed. Um, the last thing I'll say is that in, in the approvals process. There has to be an opportunity for neighborhood input. Um, I think we, we can talk about that, there's, you know. Discussion about special permits, there's discussion about, you know, all of that can happen in a licensing process. I, I think it's enormously important that neighbors have a say in this process and they have the opportunity to. To voice their opinion about it, it's, it's everybody's neighborhood. And, and I think neighbors have a right to, uh, participate in that process, so I would hate to see. A licensing process, which is a kind of check the box process, you get your license. And you only get your license taken away if, if the neighbors are complaining. And because that puts the onus on the neighbors again to, to police the situation, which I don't think anybody really wants to do. So it, I, I think there's a lot of this that hasn't been talked about at all yet. Uh, and I think it's all fundamental to, to passing a zoning amendment that. The licensing, the enforcement, the neighborhood input, all of those things that, that, that really are the other half of the equation, really need to be clearly spelled out.
Thanks. Thank you.
Honestly, you all have actually summed up pretty much anything that I would add to this comment, so I would only be repeating what everyone else has already mentioned. I do think the priority is Plum Island and we need to be addressing that.
Thank you. Um, just add a couple of things, um. You know, I think that from the point of view of zoning, we don't, this, this would be the only time we've ever looked at zoning, to my knowledge. Looked at zoning from the point of view of, uh, enforcement and license, we don't. If we were to look at whether, a site could be zoned for a gas station or for a retail store or a restaurant. We wouldn't be, uh, don't typically, I don't, I don't know that we've ever looked at licensing as a condition, say. We, we're not going to look at that until we, uh, until we address the non subjectives, so. I feel that our job is to decide where these things are, um, appropriate to be placed. And, um, what kind of approval we're going to, I was pointing about. It's going to be, if we're going to have to have, uh, neighborhood, if we want neighborhood, don't tell me to say you're going to have that. If you want to have neighborhood input, that turns it from a priority to a special permit. There's no way you can do a little ground there, I don't think, so, um. So the, uh, so my feeling is, uh, you know, maybe a minority, my feeling is that. All I would like to know when licensing is, is resident, um, I don't think it's my purview, it's the planning board's average, that's, that's part of this process. Uh, so, so I think I am a minority. I don't, the other, the thing I don't know, one thing I don't know about this, I don't think we have any information at this point as to how many units would be affected, in what way by this, we don't know how many units, to my knowledge, can or can't meet the parking requirements. We don't know how many, to my knowledge, industrial units there are in the residential districts we're proposing, where this ordinance proposes to prohibit. Um, and, now, I don't have a real sense of, of whether, how many, whether, will this, will this ordinance prevent many more units that we don't have right now? Will it, will it because there are many more houses in this, this area that could qualify, but I don't have the information right now. Um, so I guess I have a concern that you don't have the information that will let us make an informed decision at this point. Um, and then my third, my third, which is really very, uh, very important, I guess, is the hundred and twenty days. Um, I, I feel that this uh far out of line in terms of what we're talking about, this is owner-occupied. As an absentee, as an absentee owner-occupied, that's what we're really talking about, saying, it's an owner-occupied unit, but the owner-occupied can be absentee owner for a third year and that seems uh to be somewhat misleading and changing the direction. So, uh, I guess I'm, I'm in a different position with several of you, but I think we should just, you know, unless, unless you have any further thoughts at this point, I think we should just start going through the ordinance, um, going section by section. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say before we get into a discussion?
I just have a question maybe for Andy. Um, long-term rentals, is there any place in the city that is not, that are not allowed? Is there zoning that says long-term rentals cannot be in any section of the city?
No, I can get it out.
And is there any um policing on driveways and things like that? Like, like parking spaces per driveway or?
Per, per, it's a parking space.
No, like, can a, can a two-bedroom condo rented out is to somebody who has three, three cars and is parking on the street?
Oh, well.
Is that monitored in any way?
I, I, we may have, once, I have been here at some situation like that, where there's, uh, if someone has an extra space available or you're saying, makes available to someone else to compensate off without street parking.
No, I'm saying, like, if I have an apartment that I want to put out there for lease, it's a two-bedroom apartment, is there any, there's nobody watching whether I rent to somebody who happens to have four vehicles and I have two parking spaces?
Yes, that, uh, for instance, not tracking number of vehicles, we don't have anything right now that is tracking that. We had, uh, tracking individual details like that, once, when I, every short-term rental, you know, there are cars.
Long-term rental.
Long-term rentals, short-term rentals, it's difficult for us to do because we don't have twenty-four-hour staff, of the sales.
Right. Right.
I think, I think the, the point, maybe the point that I was trying to make is we require for a single-family home, two parking spaces, something like that. The person who owns that home, lives there, may have one car, may have five cars. So we don't, you know, we, we only, we, we set our regulations based on what we determine to be a reasonable average in terms of car ownership. And it probably works out over time. There are certainly places where, you know, somebody is living in a home with two adult children, or four cars, and it may not, two of the cars may be parked on the street. So I think that's your point, is that this?
Well, and my point is that, let's say, some of us think that a high percentage of these STRUs might get shut down due to the restrictions of the ordinance. And if these absentee investors so choose, they can become long-term renters, rental units, which then are gonna have no ordinance, per se. And so just, you know, keeping in front of mind, a parking solution may not be had by shutting down short-term rental units because if those become long-term tenants, there's nobody policing the parking issue.
Uh, sorry, just, just to clarify, Jennifer, as I mentioned before, keep in mind that there are limitations on which type of use, you know, properties, whether it's a single-family, for instance, but you can necessarily have a second. Sorry, go ahead.
Jennifer Monche, I think it's gonna be sooner.
Come up to my.
I think the, the shortest answer I can give is that although under zoning for a single-family residence, we require two spaces, zoning has no ability to limit the number of cars, if registered, that an individual family owns. They could have six vehicles, eight vehicles, and zero parking spaces. All of those cars, whether it's a rental or homeowner, can end up on the street. I think that's the point you're making. So that problem exists, whether it's a short-term rental or not.
So it won't be monitored if a fair percentage of these become long-term rentals. Zoning does not have the ability to monitor that.
That is correct. I just wanted to point out that that does not, so it means that you would be allowed under zoning to have another dwelling to play for the property.
No, I'm saying if, if some of these short-term, these are condos, some of these.
Right, I agree.
The investor, the investor owned in particular condos, okay? And I just think that there's a consensus amongst the public, in particular, that if these short-term rentals are shut down based on an ordinance that has restrictions, there's going to be an issue that's alleviated, and I'm just suggesting that that issue is not going to be alleviated and it may actually become exasperated because if somebody's there three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, they're going to entertain and have company and they're gonna live there. So I just wanted to say in the forefront that this parking issue could become worse without the short-term rentals as opposed to, because we have lots of rental units with absolutely no parking and they're on the, the streets all the time and that would, those numbers would go up.
I, I understand exactly the way you're making it. I think it would be the same time, I think there's various perspectives as to where that, separate from laws and how many cars, you know. And I recognize that some families will have many cars and some families will have a motor car, so I, I understand what you're making.
While I stand here, the point, um, perhaps that this board might want to consider is if you do move forward and a property is eligible to be a short-term rental because it has parking spaces, you may want to suggest that licensing require that those spaces be made available to the renters, not just that they have them. Otherwise, those spaces could continue to be occupied by the resident's cars, not solving the issue. So you might consider that in any recommendation you make.
Before, before we get into the, the ordinance. Let's just jump in and I just wanna go section by section. So on the first page of the ordinance, the first section is the section of the list of allowable uses. Um, anybody have any, uh, comments or questions about that that they'd like to consider as part of our recommendation? Um, next one, I think, is probably very important, the table of uses. This, uh, the, uh, whether a use is permitted, allowed by special permit, not permitted, uh, for each of the zoning districts in the city and, um, each of the three types that are being proposed. And though all of this, already got the issue of not permitted in the conservation and the WMD and, and new, uh, anybody, let's just talk about owner-occupied first of all. The proposal in this ordinance is to allow them in all of the residential districts and business districts, um, essentially as a right, just a certificate from the zoning industry rather than a special permit. And as has been discussed till now several times, uh, that does not provide a method within zoning for, uh, you, whatever. Like, any, how do you feel about this, this proposal? And do you think this is appropriate, appropriate approach for owner-occupied, short-term rental unit? And for the time being, let's just say we're gonna talk about the hundred and twenty days later. So is this just, this, just this concept of owner-occupied short-term?
I, I think in R1, R2, and, and I would say even R3, uh, I, I, I really think that modern and, and neighborhood input is, is, should be fundamental to the approval of us. Feel less strongly about it than some of the other districts, but those, those are the most sensitive, densely populated neighborhoods where, where, you know, you really, you're careful about the approval of us. So I think in those three, um, classifications, R1, R2, and R3, I, I think we need to allow.
So you're talking special permit.
I don't agree. I think that it should be handled, um, as the property is, is, is being operated. And if there's occurrences, then that, then those occurrences are reported and handled. Again, I, I know that they're different, but in the same respect, if I own a long-term rental, I'm not gonna ask my neighborhood input on whether or not I should be able to rent that or to whom I'm renting it to. So I think it should be handled as the property exists so that the well-performing properties can be well-received and those that are not performing well, or complaints by neighbors can be addressed and then their license could be revoked, essentially.
I agree with Heather. I think that, um, creating a community process on the front end is gonna be difficult for whoever, um, the special permit authority is, um. I think that if there are problems, then, um, complaint and, uh, look again and, you know, penalties. You know, after a certain number of complaints, they, the license is revoked and, you know, maybe banned for three years or come back for one. I think that's, of course, I think that, that's, that's.
Okay, I would just add that I also think that, um, if it is a problem, I think that a license could be removed permanently and then maybe re-engage on transfer ownership or something like that. Um. I'm all for like a three strikes, you're out type of thing because I do, I do see these in neighborhoods and I understand the neighborhood's issue. So if there's an issue, I do agree that the neighbors could say enough is enough and that person is no longer able to operate.
That's, that's all I was gonna say. Just, I, I agree with, uh, that, 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 that it should come into the enforcement and license department.
Any ideas? Long from there. Um, what about investor short-term rentals? Current, uh, proposal is to, um, allow these only in the R3 and business districts and only by a special. So basically, no, uh, no investor units in the R1 and R2 and none of these are gonna, that's right, you know, on the fire, special. Comments?
Go ahead. So I, I mentioned before that I would, um, allow them by special permit for existing STRUs uh, in the R1 and R2. And I think we need to deal with special permit.
Yes.
Criteria.
And I agree with that, that existing should be allowed. And then I think that some of those would self-correct and get knocked out with strict processes and regulations.
I truly, supporting.
I, I agree with it as, as presented here. I continue to think that in, in the densest neighborhoods, uh, let's go back to the hundred and twenty days.
He's speaking about a big question.
We're not gonna talk about it. Um, I, I don't think that they should be allowed, I, I don't think we should have units in, in dense residential neighborhoods that, that don't have owner's consent. So I think, I think this, this is okay as if.
What's, um, just this use, investor short-term rentals. I noticed that the, uh, better records, it's a right, the B2 and B3 districts, I mean, they're more pervasive than the, I, investor short-term rentals, but I guess a bit better practices, you might define, so. Um, and then the final thing is the Plum Island short-term, so units allowed in the R3 district, Plum Island overly district, um, will be allowed in, um, without a special permit.
I'm, I'm actually surprised that it got this far in, in that way. I, and, and it was, it was actually feedback this evening that made me think this more through that it's just been, okay, let it go, let it go, it'll be your own zone. I'm just, I'm very surprised that it made it this far in that way. Um, because I understand it's been a vacation area, you know, historically, I understand the nature of Plum Island. Um, but I don't agree that it should be its own zone, its own zoning. I do think it should be incorporated, maybe not as strictly, maybe with some caveats, but I, it does surprise me that it's gone this far into the ordinance proposals.
Oh, that.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, just, just for clarification, I understand that, you know, maybe severe concern. Um, just keep in mind, I know Jennifer knows because she's, uh, what this particular ratio, because of the industry there, there's an argument to be made that by trying now to restrict some of those, they might already be grandfathered because of the use, or the use of the going on there. So not recognizing that in the zoning may be problematic for the purposes of enforcement going forward. Uh, I don't know what Jennifer wanted to say better, okay. But just, that's something to keep in mind with respect to why that is necessary to be here and why it might carve down a little differently than the rest of the city, the neighborhood.
I think the point is.
To let her carve it off specifically for single housing, so.
The point, the point being that those, that as a seasonal housing, short-term rentals, I think that happened before zoning.
Correct.
And so that's, that's, that's different than perhaps what happened. Be harder to demonstrate that properties would be used for short-term rental in that before zoning.
Right, and it, it's possibly saying right now, we're gonna make a place like the Parma, we're gonna make a more, maybe problematic in terms of, um, having to, maybe, maybe, potentially many property owners out there, whether they really need to get a permit for these now, or sorry, having the right to do that operation. So you can certainly get a divided rate on the requirements, things like that, but it's something to keep in mind, I guess, in respect to all that.
Richard, I keep trying to look over my shoulder to see if you have any response.
Now, I mean, obviously, I'm li- listening intently, but I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay, then. Um, so on the, on the second page of the ordinance, we get into the footnotes of the, um, of the use table. And the first footnote has to do with the zoning board being the special permit granting authority for the uses that are subject to special permits. And, uh, says that the special permits, perhaps automatically after three years, a person of the applicant are not transferable, do not move on. I don't think there's any question of that. That's, that's pretty clear. Uh, the next footnote.
Oh, sorry, apologies.
Okay, next footnote has to do with, uh, those that are, um, the application for review by the zoning district, the process of making the. the application for review by the zoning administrator, the process of making the, whether the zoning administrator makes a determination that no zoning relief is required, that would be a P use. And uh, and I guess I have a question and um Andy, Jennifer uh could address this. There is a statement in the beginning and at the end of this third line saying by definition, all S T R U's terminates after three years. And that by definition confuses me because I couldn't find anywhere else, and maybe I missed it, anywhere else in the ordinance. Limited the, as I write, uh, you know, P, short-term rental to three years. Is there, is, is, has, has that been discussed by staff?
I, I'm not aware of another place we had that.
I am not aware of anywhere else where we, we say that that use is limited to three years, what I believe the sponsors intended was was to say that everyone needs to be reevaluated every three years to confirm compliance. So a by right S T R U needs to come in every three years to sort of measure up if you will.
I guess my, my, my sense is that these are the types of things that don't really belong in footnotes. They should be in the text of an ordinance and somebody should say, some places in the ordinance should say exactly what you said, but it doesn't say that in the ordinance.
I think it may have been an effort to keep it as brief as possible.
I don't think that's a.
Might be a, might be a comment you made, yes.
I mean, it is, that's, that's something that, that's, I've gone back and forth in this ordinance and tried to figure out where it said that.
It's a very. Why do you think it suggests that we, different pieces of this being in different places, standing in your eyes, we're down in Ed and we're lettering it in uh the footnote, so at that table.
Well, not only, not only in different places, but just, it seems to be referring to something else because it says by definition, it terminates after three years. So that seems to indicate that there's somewhere else in the ordinance where it says that.
No, I, I'm sorry, I think it's, it's meant that right here in this, in this, per this sentence. Right? And so maybe, maybe, maybe you could be read a phrase to say, you know, as opposed to say by definition, just saying all short-term rentals is terminated after three years unless the perceived day, you know, the confirmation, which is the intent that the government says to make sure that they're checking in for. Where did that change?
I mean, the, the footnote above K says that all S T R U's special permits shall last on that.
Right.
But yeah.
There's nothing about the P. So, and it, and this may actually have done the result of completely different things together and not. I think that needs, that, that needs to be. So, so then um this actually goes much further than that. So it says that anytime that an owner applies for any three-year period starts over. That basically says, it says you have to, you have to reapply if you, you do something, a property that requires a weapons permit.
It has to be reconfirmed by the zoning administrator. Essentially, it may not, it may be the, the application involved, the preservation commission. Um, this might work, you know, your research area may have that to do with it or trigger anything different, but um that, that one, I think, is maybe more questionable than maybe perhaps the others, but I think, um, I think that was the same time with the special permits and parents' purposes. Some of it is supposed to make sure that someone wasn't um, you know, either applying for that or that the overall baggage could say you just sit well with the property. Like, this is maybe for the pressure, but whether or not the combination of uses on a property might change, whether that's what you elaborate, that's another sort of way of looking at it. This doesn't necessarily address all those situations.
I guess, I guess what's unclear to me is whether and, and this may be a matter of how staff interprets it. But I don't think the actual plain writing of this sentence says that it makes it clear whether or not you have to apply for a new special permit. If you needed a special permit, you would. Whether you need to apply for a new special permit, once you apply for a given, you know, weapons purchase, it's, it's very vague and you have to kind of.
But if, so if it's a special permit and it's in K above, right? So that one expires after three years.
Right, but, but then, but if, if after the first year, you want to put up a fence that requires you to have weapons. Then, then you go back for a new special permit. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's not really.
And again, Jennifer may want to, like, it's on a pressure. I would read that as a confirmation from the zoning administrator rather than the need to apply again to the board. If that's your question.
That's, that's actually my question.
That's how I would interpret it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So maybe, I guess maybe this whole footnote needs to be much more clearly, but it's, it's not.
I concur that with Andy's interpretation and is consistent with what my personal interpretation might be. Uh, I do think it could be made more clear um so that someone perhaps coming into the role after myself who didn't sit through all these hearings for years might be uh, it might be more easily interpreted. So I would support clarifying that. Uh, there are a few items in that as well, but um one might argue don't need to be there, like a contong review probably does not change the nature of um the ability to operate a short-term rental. Um, but all these others, under, the zoning administrator would be reviewing building permit applications whenever they come in. So that would be something that that person in that capacity would review regardless of whether the language is actually in here or not. It's sort of a belts and suspenders um section.
But what happens is if you review anything here, um, any of these items here, that becomes a new appealable decision, decision to the zoning.
If, if they were to uh apply for something that rendered the short-term rental not to be available because of what they're proposing, they would get denied for the building permit, for whatever they were proposing.
I guess what I'm, I'm looking at the other way. So if you were to go through that process and review and review and say, this is okay. Then a butter could appeal that.
Yes, if that would be an appealable uh rule in.
Uh, does anybody have any other comments like that? Um, and then I, that basically says. Um, okay, moving into section A and G. We have a purposes section. Uh, any comments on the, on the purposes section? Um, definitions. Definitions of certified potluck lab, short-term rental unit. Short-term rental unit is used for fewer than thirty consecutive days and more than fourteen days per year. So if somebody, if somebody does seven weekends of short-term rental, this counts as a short-term rental.
Oh, sorry.
Keep on.
Sorry, watch my, my hand, my hand write.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so it's saying that if somebody were to rent out their residence for let's say that seven consecutive weekends, a Friday and Saturday night, there's nothing required.
Correct.
And therefore, there's no regulations on that property either.
It's not determined to be, it's not called a short-term rental. It's just something we are somehow allowing. It's the way, that's the way the proposal is written.
I think that is like can of worms because that's basically July and August every weekend in a neighborhood. And the neighbors can't, I mean, of course, you can complain, but there's no supporting documentation and there's no, I think that's a slippery one. Being that we're a seasonal community.
Maybe I'll see any comments on, on that definition.
I agree with that.
I agree as well.
Just a question. I'm not quick, quickly looking at Google. Um, I recall that being a state that.
I think that we may have um, again, in the attempt to keep this brief, lost something in translation. There is a state law that says that you can't charge, you don't charge room tax for fourteen days or less. I don't think that there's a state law that says you can't consider it a short-term rental for fourteen days or less. So zoning might still consider that a short-term rental and regulate it and require a license, but we couldn't charge room tax. Two different things. I would be concerned as zoning administrator about that because without having some sort of regulation, it would be almost impossible to track the number of days someone had rented. Um, so again, I, I do think that's a point that should be more closely considered and would support your considering, recommending, looking at that more closely.
Say, say that again. I'm not really, wasn't really clear on what your thought is there.
I don't, I don't think that the zoning has to allow fourteen uh days as exempted from being considered a short-term rental. The state law says you don't charge room tax.
But what was your point about tracking?
I don't know how we would. Uh, if you don't regulate them and you don't consider them short-term rentals and you don't require them to license for fewer than fourteen days, how do we know how many days they are renting?
I was, I was, I wasn't concerned. I was wondering when you were saying that the, the tax revenue would help you, but it doesn't.
No, 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 I, I, no, I just think that the, the, the state law is separate from what you're considering here.
I, I would just now then, I think Heather, I think I pointed this out earlier, but there is unfortunately, there's a disconnect between the state and the tax side, which we agree versus the local. We can't unfortunately uh get all the information from the G R and be helpful to us in dealing with tracking that. Registrations and so forth. That becomes harder for us because we're out of, get separate information from the G R and. Not concerned. This is our major rented, go from year based on year, but they don't know. I mean, it's, it's hard for us to. But there's still track revenue coming in.
I don't know the answer to this, but I'm just thinking about this. In order for any property to be on the platforms, there has to be a state certificate issued, I believe.
Uh, I believe that's the way it's supposed to be, but I think that might be the major platforms, I'm not sure how much of the energy platform is, is compliant with that, but I understand it as the larger one.
So, and I'm just kind of like by time thinking about this. So uh, one way to tackle this fourteen days um. So anyone who has a state license should by default just be considered a short-term rental unit. Regardless of the number, like if you're getting a state license to operate as a short-term rental unit, whether you're doing, you know, even to get on those platforms for fourteen days. If I'm right, you'd have to get this state certificate. So my point is, if we didn't have that in there, the idea is anybody with a certain state certificate is now a short-term rental and then just has to be within the ordinance. Am I saying that clearly? Because you can't track, she's right. Like you can't tell the difference between fourteen and thirty-six days over the course of a year unless you literally have somebody mon, like, it's, it's, it'd be very, very difficult. So do not have that in there. And just to say, if you have a state certificate to be a short-term rental unit, you're a short-term rental unit. We can't track if you're thirteen days or eighteen days. So we're just gonna not have that small clause perhaps.
Well, and, and I understand, I guess in part, I, it's something, there's a couple of pieces maybe where I wrote this, but uh part of this, I guess, is that the um local community can still establish what it wants to define certain uses as, and for instance, that the subcategories of what's a short-term, like, yeah, there is some local discretion to define what short-term permit is and allows us to go with that. So um they go beyond what, you know, the state is or, or or they're around the future.
I just think that this is a little bit of room for problems.
So you're, you're concerned, you're, you're, you're saying fourteen day is a problem if we just.
Because it's really seven weekends and that could be seven weekends every summer. That could be a problem in a neighborhood. And it would eliminate the neighbors' opportunities to, I mean, they could file complaints and the police can come, but I'm just saying in terms of like, it just is too gray.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the other city ordinances will come into play in a sense of.
They would, but I just, I don't know.
If I could just, um, if, if we said that uh, if we said fourteen days is still a short-term, that, but fourteen days. What, what is the tax situation? I mean, is it up to the ordinance then to say? I've only rented for
I.
Fourteen days, so I don't.
I don't want to speak beyond my knowledge on this, but I, I do believe it's something that we should ask for clarification on. I, I, just because one cannot take in state tax. No, I, I think, I think Heather is pointing out a whole that would allow more flexibility perhaps than intended. And I think it may be a carryover of some language um when we had a longer ordinance that um does not necessarily need to, to be retained. So I think you could at least ask the city council to consider um looking at that.
I, I would, I would suggest that too, maybe one is confirming, you know, on that, but also I guess maybe speaking as a language, speaking to as a policy, whether you think, whether you think that policy should be regardless of any little detail.
Right.
Think that policy should be more, more, more with respect to neighborhoods.
Yeah. In regards to tax though, I just have a question. These platforms charge the tax and then pay the state the percentage of the tax, right? Like, they're, so they're not going to monitor the number of days. So even those fourteen days, they're still paying state tax on their rental if they're going through a platform.
And we're, again, I think we would have to be going on base, based on, you know, what we understand that some of the major platforms are working out services, you know, a system will hire, provide the state. But I can't speak to how well that is being done. That's where you're getting ideas, how well work uh managed to be done. Or should I say, that's uh.
That's confusing.
Yeah.
Okay, um operator, operators, agents, primary residents. That was another place where uh it was some discussion before, which is the operator. The operator who is the owner. Um, the owner or the owners are authorized. Has to live in the house for, in the unit for a hundred eighty-three days a year. Basically half, half the year in order for it to qualify as a, as a primary residence. So I guess I don't know whether that's a standard um, other, other laws and why that.
I think it's common because it's more than half the year.
Primary.
I think that's part of it, yeah. Really, really predominant.
It's not predominant, it's just, just over half. Okay, there's no comment on that. Okay. Um and then there's the definition of residential unit. Uh, and then basically the definition of residential here uh limits it to units, dwelling units in a single-family, two-family, multi-family or mixed-use structure. And I can't remember whether residential unit is defined anywhere else in the zoning ordinance.
I don't think there's another definition of the generic, I'll check right out. I don't think there is a, a general definition of residential unit.
Okay, moving on to requirements and restrictions, next table. Okay, so here. Um, I guess there's probably a lot of discussion that could be had about this table. Uh, in terms of the um whether you want to call them by columns or by rows. Take it whichever way, C makes no sense. Let's go by columns. I'll do it that way. So the first column is whether uh is the owner's operator's primary residence or not. That's basically self-defined because an owner occupied is the owner's residence. That's basically self-defined because an owner occupied is the owner's residence. Best owners are not, to Iowa, there's no restriction. So basically for the owner-occupied unit, the owner has to live there half the year for the other units. Operator presence when guests are present. So this is where we get to the hundred twenty days. I guess we should probably discuss that right now where, if we have a consensus of where we're going with it.
I think the hundred twenty days should apply to what was previously called a home share unit. And for any other unit type where the owner could be present when the rental is staying in place, there should be an obligation that the owner or that basically the driver is that be present. That's, that's the way the previous amendment provided. So we can argue about a hundred and twenty days whether that's the right time or not, but I think fundamentally it's to apply only to that's a single-family house.
And one thing I just, just again for consideration, I don't know if there's one way to this, but the this is like necessarily suggesting a stance for saying this, but the question of whether it's a hundred and twenty days consecutive or whether there's any sort of break in there, which the operators is coming back and checking in versus longer extended period of time.
But that's just being a long comparison.
No, I'm thinking of a hundred and twenty days when they're gone, but you have turnover, a short-term rent, you know, that period, is that?
I agree. So I think that's completely different. I think that if somebody's gone for a few weeks here and a few weeks there, but we are, adds up to a hundred and twenty days. They're back in the property, their eyes and ears, they're in touch with their neighbors. I agree. Yeah, that, that they should be, in other words, I don't think that a snowbird should be able to go away for a hundred and twenty second consecutive days and have short-term rentals cycling through their home without them revisiting their own home. I can agree with that. You know, maybe you go away for three weeks, you're back for a spell, you go away again, you might go away in summer, so a hundred and twenty days. I'm not saying I'm for that number, but I can see the more clarification in that it's over the course of a year and not intended to be a one-time stretch thing each year.
I, I think, I mean, I would assume that somebody, you know, it's gone for three months, they're, they've got a proper manager or somebody. I would require someone to specifically come back from Florida to check on their house. I would think that, you know, the licensing should be something that's available. I don't, but exactly.
A twenty-four percent contact, so it's.
Yeah.
I guess the list.
Right.
But I agree with that, that point. Just because I wasn't trying to raise it, or flexibly, sorry enough, you know, certain policy questions here. Or just the question that if the closet conversion nature of this is of particular concern, particularly the residential districts, right? You know, does the constant turnover, you know, versus staying here at a time? You know, versus any kind of check-in or, you know, or bring you back to the baseline of what that district is, just sort of a residential district. Is that a finisher? You know, again, it's, there's, I mean, one of these things, you have a range of different perspectives and policies. It's just something to consider.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that the that it bleeds over into the investor category of, if you have, if you have a dwelling being rented every week for six months. Even for three months.
Just the same time, just trying to, but that's the problem with the, the fact that they combined those different categories into this one category. It makes it gray on how to apply each, each instance, whether it's an owner-adjacent and so forth. I mean, that's sort of what we're grappling with here because certain things apply to one, but not to others. A little hard to, to get a general statement out of it, applying to this one category, the way they redefined this, this grouping.
So I don't really have a problem with any of this, except that I would make it no presence requirement for up to ninety days. And that must be physically present for any access. So like, I would just.
Not sure that we have a any type of consensus. Thought you had anything you wanted to say about that.
No, I, I, I just refer back to the previous amendment drafts and yeah, I think it was always an intention that where an owner could be present, they or a designated representative would be present when, when the unit was being rented. And, and the only time that this hundred and twenty, nineteen came up was in the case of, of single-family house where the owner was leaving. And, and that was put in as some kind of limitation of how much of the year that owner could actually be absent and, and rent their house. That was the mechanism for controlling. So I, I think, I think this applies related to that. That's historically how this, this has been looked at in all the other previous events. It's important to, to reinforce that, that we're an owner can be present while they're represented if they need. So I don't know if you do a footnote on this and say the hundred and twenty days only applies to that's in the penthouses that would be vacated or determined. I don't know, I won't say that, but but I, I think it really needs to be focused on that.
I think that's a fair one. Can I, I, I'd just like to maybe speak to what I as zoning administrator read this to say right now. People have spoken to, can someone, I bet someone could rent their single-family house out as a short-term rental if they were living there three hundred and sixty-five days a year, as long as they stayed in the unit while they rented it out. That's what this sets right now. They can go away for a hundred and twenty days a year, four months of the year continuously under this provision as it is right now. So unless the board wants to make a recommendation to reduce that either into smaller segments of thirty days at a time or a ninety-day period is, as I think Beth was suggesting. The, the house can still be rented, whether it's a one-family or, you know, two-family, it can still be rented three hundred and sixty-five days of the year if an owner is present. There's no, we're not limiting them from doing that. I don't think a footnote is further required. But I, so yes, it combines them, but I, I think the only question that you're all grappling with is is the hundred and twenty days too long to keep the, keep the reins in on that sort of more investor-like component?
Well, I think it's, it's not just a single-family, because it also applies to another unit of the same lot as the owner's prime, primary residence. So if you had a duplex, or if you had a secondary unit, a lot of that, it goes beyond just, I mean, I had, that, that was what I, how I was interpreting. Labs. We're talking, it's the same as the, what was previously called owner-adjacent.
The, the ordinance in its simplified version does not contemplate those.
Well, it does. It says, it says that defines an owner-occupied unit as including another unit of the same lot as the owner's principal residence.
Sorry, I, I guess I was thinking of multi-family. Sorry.
It's, it's just, it's, I think it's that combination of things is making it.
Yeah, I, I just, I look at, with the heading for this, it says operator presence when guests present. And in this section, it says no presence requirement for up to a hundred and twenty days of the short term. For, for any of those owner-occupied. A hundred and twenty days is, is, that's a lot of content. And, you know, if, if the owner could be present because it's an owner-adjacent or it's a only limited share or, you know, one of the other types. I, we, we have always, I thought, stressed the idea that the owner needed to be present to provide oversight. A hundred and twenty days back to Heather's point. You know, that's, that's an entire summer, that's, that's an entire year of weekends, that's, that's no presence from the owner or, you know, a significant block of time, whatever, how you divide that up during the year. And I think that should really only apply to a situation where the owner is vacating the house and, you know, is going somewhere else and they're letting out the entire house. That's, that's how this was written.
So are you concerned with the situ, the number of days for the situation where the owner is not present? Or you think if you have two, say you have a two-family and you live in one and you're using the other short, short term, that there should be some requirement because you're able to be there?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's how I remember the previous versions being written, that a limited share and an owner-adjacent unit where an owner could potentially be present. And they or a representative should be present to provide oversight. They're only not present when they're renting out their entire house. And in that case, there's a time limit, you know, amount of days per year where you could actually do that. That was the control on that. So, you know, the hundred and twenty days, I, I don't necessarily feel strongly in one way or another about that that's the right number or not. But I think it really only should apply to a certain family. And we should have a notation here that, you know, when the owner and because they need to be present for their units being that short-term rental.
I was just gonna comment, if it, if it's an owner-adjacent unit and they're renting, since they're limited to having only one short-term rental, it's not like they're gonna go away and rent their house as well as having their owner-adjacent unit rented. So it, it seems to me it's sort of the same situation, whether it's a single-family house or an owner-adjacent. And, you know, the question is whether we allow them to be away for a certain number of days.
What I'm saying is if, if you have a two-family house and it's owner-occupied, the owner lives in one unit and they're renting out the other unit, that's a short-term. The owner has the opportunity to be present when that second unit is being rented. And for the previous versions of the amendment, they were required to be present. If I have a limited share rented for the previous definition, I'm renting out a portion of my house while I'm still there. I should still be there when I'm, when I'm renting. So in those, those two situations, the previous amendments where that somebody provide oversight while that was happening. But that's not possible when you're renting out your entire house and you're leaving. So that's where this, like, a hundred and twenty days.
And I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying the situation is really the same. If, if they were renting half of, the other half of, you know, their, their two-family house, they could end up going away in a certain amount of time and still rent the other half of the house as a short-term rental. It's sort of the same effect as a, a single-family person not being there. You know, the question, you're saying they could be present, but they may not be. And what we're saying here is we're allowing them not to be present for up to a hundred and twenty days.
If you go back and look at the previous, I think it was, it was pretty clear. You know, the, the owner occupancy
Right.
had, had a hundred and eighty-three days.
Right, but that's not in front of us right now.
I know, but, but I'm saying, you know, the spirit of that should be incorporated.
Just, I think that the question is how many days are we comfortable with someone renting when they're not there per year? And then we go from there. Because that's the, you know, the extreme situation that's everybody is concerned about, limiting the time that somebody wouldn't be there to provide oversight. But if we're, I don't think that there's any reason why someone that holds a two-family should have to be there versus a single-family. We're just deciding how long we're comfortable. I mean, somebody that you could say in a single-family, right, the person could be there and just rent the room out. But we're not required, right? It's really like, how long will we be comfortable with somebody not being there?
I'd like to add that there's another component to this, which is which we can imagine, although I specifically don't think we should be imagining what the licensing should do here, right? Because I wouldn't be keen to have no presence requirement for any of these categories if the operator is completely unreachable. So I can imagine that in the licensing, there's gonna be something about the, the operator being reachable, being known. Maybe be proximate or nearby or, you know, phone call away basically. But that's not in here, that's not part of zoning. So, you know, no presence requirement to me is particularly offensive for the investors. Because we have, if I heard anything from the public, it's that there has to be a way to reach these people and there is a problem. So this just gets to me and I think it's, maybe we're saying the obvious here, like at least two-thirds of the topics we've hit, we've said, if licensing does blank, then this works. There's just so much missing without the licensing.
I'd like to add that perhaps the language says no presence required for up to a hundred and twenty days per calendar year, however, in increments of to have the operator actually get eyes and ears back from the property intermittently. You know, maybe it's in thirty-day increments so that they could have short-term rentals for thirty days and then they have to come back two weeks or or what have you, but it's supposed to allow this to become a four-month stretch.
I just fundamentally don't understand how you can say, on the one hand, we're not going to allow investor units in, in certain neighborhoods. And then say, but if you're an owner occupant, you can leave for a hundred and twenty days out of the year and still rent there. Then, that's, that's, those two things are, are kind of diametrically. I, I just, I, I think I think that's not what we have been talking about historically. And I think it's very contrary to the idea that investor units would, would not be allowed in certain residential districts. So I, I just, I can't see why you would apply a hundred and twenty days to all.
I think, I think a component of that was that as an investor unit, they're, they're, they're natural there and they would have less interest in the neighborhood and and presumably the maintenance of the house up to the, the standard of someone who is occupying the house at least some of the time. And, and what we're saying owner occupies is at least half of the year. I think that was the contrast. So that, that was why I think was the difference.
But it's about oversight. And, and if you're saying a hundred and twenty days out of the year, I don't have to provide oversight for, for the rental. That's, that's all summer. That's every weekend. If you're renting two, two nights out of the weekend, that's, that's.
Only if you're, if you're coming back during the week. It's, it's different though, because what we're saying is if you're renting every weekend, you have to come back to and live in the house for the five days in between.
You're not there when the rental is happening.
Right, right.
You're not providing the oversight, should to protect the neighborhood, you know, while the rental is happening.
Right, but the oversight, I think, you know, should perhaps come with their licensing side. In its like, is there an operator or a contact?
Right, so I think if, if this permit were granted, you could have that, you have a secondary phone number, you have a secondary contact who is responsible. I do think, I see how it's similar to investors, but I also see from just a real personal human experience that there's many people who may not have opportunities to travel or, or go to a warmer climate for a few months. This would absolutely grant that. You know, we, we talk. You know, we we talked a lot about people who just they just can't afford things as taxes go up in the city and. And other costs go up, and I do see this as an opportunity for some people to just enjoy parts of their lives. But I also. Do not like that it would be consecutive without eyes and ears, so I think that there's ways to handle that. Um be it a second contact or somebody who registered on a special permit as being responsible. That could be a a caveat to solving issues.
But I think a lot of that, I think that goes to license.
I agree.
And there, you know, a a lot of other towns, there needs to be a twenty four hour. Someone available twenty four hours that can be there within an hour, like I think that's completely reasonable. I think that. You know, serves to deal with the issue, I think. You know, this presence requirement, I take mean, do you need to actually be physically present? Which I think is a lot different than saying that it's simple. And I I I wouldn't require someone to come back and check periodically, as long as there is somebody overseeing. Like I'm not, I wouldn't think that somebody that. Goes winters down in Florida needs to come back, I don't even know how I would force that, you know, I'm gonna go. Talk to Jennifer and say, hey, I need to report.
That contact could.
Right, perhaps, or if there's an issue, correct.
So next column, maximum occupancy. And I'm gonna suggest that we, after we finish this column, we wrap up. Losing brain cells and and postponement of the next meeting, so let's just try and get through this this table. And we'll pick it up at our next, unless people feel really energized to keep going. Well, you can give me some.
Okay, I got you.
Trying to chime in on this.
Yeah.
Uh I got, obviously, I want to remember to chime in here, but I'm just trying to, I think in this step, we may have published this earlier, but. The question about how many guests versus bedrooms, maybe clarifying between maximum occupancy, I have to deal with that issue. By clarifying between maximum occupancy and rooms, really we're not talking about. You know, a situation which you have six, you know, a bedroom, but rather maybe it's two with a maximum of two per bedroom, something like that, right? That's as a clarification of the maximum occupancy. So.
I think the the point that I was. I made a few days ago was that. The way this is this works, somebody could say, I've got one bedroom. And I've got two people sleeping in the living room, two people sleeping in the den.
Exactly.
And I've but I've, so I have that the maximum occupancy requirement, I I don't provide any parking spaces. I don't want that, so I think that's a um a good point, it's the same maximum two people.
One bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, two.
You could, is that, you feel more comfortable with that than with the sense of two people, maximum two people per bedroom?
I just think the more is a very simple black and white. And I'll say the same thing, Rick, you know, it's about about parking. That, you know, we should, we should. Do the spreadsheet that that you and I talked about six months ago, that that basically says, here's your existing condition, grandfathered or not. Here's the requirement, here's how many parking spaces. And I think the more you rely on a table. Rather than a narrative to to describe that, I I think it becomes much clearer and much easier for.
One quick comment and I. I'm not sure what this what this solution is, but as you were saying, between, say, two per. Twenty points per bedroom and then maximum of three bedrooms or in place of Plum Island, maximum of six bedrooms, because I can envision. Uh some places Plum Island may have a bedroom with two bunk beds in it. But then rent out, you know, for having kids and so forth, so I mean, depending how you word that, that would that would limit some of those. Just wanted to raise that, so it could be, and I don't know how you would uh regulate that or enforce that, so.
Understood, I mean, to be frank, there's a lot of fine great details that both of the parts pose on this one that uh this fact. This is one part of the reason why it's been raised, but much staffing or resources, so to speak, are put towards monitoring, you know, for the purposes of. Of course, we have a separate discussion about the follow through enforcement, one thing for Jennifer, one thing for others, something something with the follow through that's happened. You know, maybe beyond what the office here, you know, it's heavily. Um but I I think uh here, you know, I think you can clarify that.
If I have four bedrooms, can I? A master and I just would say I'm just renting out three of those bedrooms and still have an act on six people or?
Apparently. That's all right. Think about that. For how do you find that? I guess one of the one of the struggles I'm having is to what extent do we? They they got recommendations on this ordinance, which is what we need to do. And to what extent do we want something new? I mean, I don't think we're we're called, we're not really called on to want something new, we're called on. But we could do one, for example, and provide a, for example, substitute table. But I don't want to get into rewriting the entire ordinance, so. You know, we're. We can point out things that we think are problematic and. Try to try to fix it in a limited way. Okay, parking requirements. I mean, so. I have a problem. With the words parking variance is strictly open. I don't think you can do that. I think that anything in zoning can be variable. You know, you'd have to rely on a license, a licensing entity to say, doesn't, you know, you don't think you can do that.
Uh I do think that under the, I think maybe what you're getting at is under forty eight, this zoning act. That the legislature has provided his own world appeals, the ability to provide marriage spending provision zoning, what you're getting at is here in the. The R E that's posted here, where the council be adopting a directive to sort of our appeals, if you drive out the authority in this limited area. Um similar to the the van just put on used variances.
Used variances are specifically.
Specifically referenced in the zoning act, whereas every other type of major not specifically referenced is something that can be precluded outright. So um yeah, I think generically, certainly, probably counsel on that issue, but I I think um. You maybe have a hard time making a case in court that the zoning law doesn't have the authority statute to look at it as a variance.
And I and I guess, I guess what I'm what I'm. Highlighting here is that this column, so. Back up and say, it's not that I don't trust this all. But but this column seems to give more reassurance to residents. That may be absolutely justified because. It's possible to. Somebody with a a property owner could come and say, I have a hardship and I want to be able to do this, but I don't have the required expenses.
I I'm sorry, just to add, I I know, while I do prefer that interpretation, maybe if your powerless state statute applies here. I do think, and I don't think we have our own appeals number here today, but I do think that would maybe make it harder for the board to actually. Um this, depending on the circumstances, to consider hardship to be explained, which would be prerequisite for variance. Um and given any explicit language the ordinance, the council they put there as actual weight, that I think would be considered by the board before granting any. That nature, even though they could have the authority to do so, I think if there's one of that distinction, that the board may be still inclined based on, you know. Guidance from the council, recognize the sensitivity to granting that.
Yeah. Um, if other comments on this, I think Bob has some comments. I would expect you to have.
I would, I would go back again and printed this spreadsheet that you and I talked about this morning. You know, which basically just kind of describes existing conditions, grandfathered or not, and and what the additional requirements. I I would say on this, that back back to my earlier comments about this. Being the the framework for regulating the number of of units. That that are allowed. If if we. Were to maintain this language and say if you offer one bedroom, zero additional spaces are required. You could imagine that, you know, if. If an owner couldn't provide off street parking. Um that they would limit, be limited to. Only offering one bedroom. And and in doing so, would. Minimize the impact of cars on the street. Because there's only theoretically the car for two people in one bedroom, it's on the street. So so my my concern is that. Anybody who can't provide. The parking. Uh will will want to be considered as a one bedroom unit so that they can qualify as not requiring parking. And uh I don't know how you police that, I I suppose that has to do with with looking at, you know, how it's offered on the website. And you know, what the license it is and how it's approved. But you know, there's still a positive factor to that, so you know, on on the one hand, I can see that. You know, saying zero spaces. And and limiting it to one bedroom, limits the impact on the street around. The problem, but I I think this may result in a lot of. It would be marketed as one that. Maybe that would be actually. So I don't, I. I don't necessarily disagree with what's here. Um and I feel much more strongly about the hundred and twenty days. Um but but I I would ask that we consider that the the sort of table approach to parking. So there's just no question about what is being suggested.
Anybody else, any comments on parking or this? Satisfying? Approach. Okay, maximum days per year, the short term minimum days per year, all of them say no limit. On on the number of days per year, the only restriction is the number of days that the operator has to be present for. The owner operator has to be present for. Two hundred and forty five days.
Or the investor where it's. Where it's indicated. There was, there was, so that that section applies to the um investor. As it was over the two.
It does, but I don't know.
As required.
As it's just.
And nothing is required.
Nothing's required, yeah, so it should be, it should actually say for investor, no requirement.
Just because they wanted to find that it said it could operate, could be present.
And maximum number of short term evidence per operator. One cumulatively for everybody except for Plum Island.
Yeah, is that with the exception of the existing investor units then?
Well, this ordinance doesn't have any exception.
Right, um I'll, yeah, I converted this one, but I think, you know, he had noted that, I think, he was looking at it as a policy of a global basis as opposed to. Evaluating it based on what's out there today and how it's likely affected, I think that's, we talked before, Jennifer, I talked about. That that could be one route valid, you know, with what are consideration to have. Um but you know, whether or not everybody thinks that's something that should be allowed, I think we've looked at that as well, but whether or not that should be allowed, and if so. I think that's been a point of debate, you know, for several years now.
I think in our, in our last report, at least some of us have recommended. An exemption or a. Brad, wasn't Brad, Brad.
Amnesty.
Right?
Amnesty.
Amnesty.
Right now, there's not been provision, as you reported, suggested, which is a provision to enable the ones that are operating today to to operate, even if they don't have these terms, which I think is what we're trying to do.
That was also my question, because I feel like if some of those are problematic. They'll be vetted out through. Exactly, through neighbor complaint and things like that, but I. I agree, and and part of that is from two weeks ago, some of the people who spoke who have. Existing investor units who they claim have only benefits and not any negative aspects, and if that's the case, then. Those would move forward without complaints, and if they were problematic, there would be complaints and then they would shut down.
And there's, there's, they write that over that, that's fair from there, including, starting their starting point of whether or not they're currently legal as a starting point versus being operated. Without necessarily being, you know, legal units today, which is that from the other perspective, that has been raised for concern as well.
So if the. If the if the determination was made somehow, that the city policy, existing policy that short term metal is already allowed. If that's, if that's a valid determination. Then you have a problem with a permanent, I think what we had is an amnesty to bring people into compliance. But it doesn't allow them, it wouldn't allow them to have a free. And by that, I mean, if this, the current zoning or the current proposal. Um prohibits investor owned units in R one and R two. Then you couldn't have a provision. That allowed, that made those that existed uncertainly illegal, and those that exist is not illegal because. It's not a grandfather provisions, they said, you're saying they were illegal and we're giving you. Amnesty classes to come into compliance, but if you don't have any ability to allow investor units in that period. It's not the same thing as we were talking about last time, it's not an amnesty, you can't treat, it's only you can't treat. Identical properties in the same district separately. And so the fact that somebody did something illegally before the zoning was created. And wants to keep doing it after this is created, is not a justification. I think that's, that's a problematic thing, I think that would be subject to challenge.
Can I ask for clarification on illegal and legal? Is there? Does zoning say you report that you are not allowed to rent something? For less than thirty one days, is it, is it clearly written that way?
No, I think what, uh, as we're going down here, is that much of the things others will be in context here, but what is being pointed out is the language. The ordinance, a section that says, if the use is not allowed, the ordinance explicitly is not allowed. And then there's case law, which has pointed out that the short term rentiers are quasi commercial in nature. Um and so that is, that is contributed to that, the argument made here that we have not, the city council has not specifically authorized this use, therefore it's prohibited. And an argument to be made that it's somehow um an extension of the residential use has been, you know, invalidated by the case law that suggests it's quasi commercial in nature and they're sure. Considered as an outlaw and like, has it was a commercial.
Yeah, that's that's basically, it's basically that it doesn't say that it's illegal. But because it doesn't say that it's legal, it's it's not allowed, the way the ordinance is written.
So would there, there would be no way you couldn't say that it's permitted in special permit in R one and R two? But then say only those that were.
I don't think so, I don't think that's possible.
I I'm, well, I'm, I'm the perfect answer, I'm not convinced that that particular scenario would be uh not possible legally, uh I think that may be fixed if they're all. Policy with that, I'm not necessarily convinced that that option would be there for sale. But I think if you raise a fair point, which is that it presumes that question of um. Lack of authority for the way you're dealing with, what is ostensibly the same operation.
You're looking at something.
That was the same.
Do something like that?
Is that?
I thought, didn't it look, I mean, it was a lot, but had Salem done something?
Salem, what we were proposing to do, what Salem had done, which was to provide an amnesty period for existing units to come into compliance with the zoning. But they allowed, they specifically allowed those units.
But that was to be, that was to be in full conformance with the ordinance?
Yes.
Versus here, where it may not meet the requirements of the ordinance, but it would be, the idea is that it would be allowed even though it doesn't require, it doesn't comply with all the requirements for instance. Distinction.
Well, I think the distinction was still previous, like, September, it was basically September last year, so. Yeah, so I think that we need to look into that. Well. It's my, Jamie, go ahead.
Just a comment, I think there's a name beauty with the three-year, do you overlay a three-year expiration of permitted series, that that becomes more complex. Whether the grandfather ones or amnesty, the ones reined by amnesty, whatever the right words are, it should be in depth, it would have some certain term, I would imagine, through the contents of all the other ways.
Correct, correct, well, you'd have to create, if you didn't want to have to comply with the regulations here, you'd have to create another set of regulations.
And we're about to wrap up, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Not to open a can of worms up discussion, but just to think about it, because I think one of the biggest technical issues here is the lack of criteria for special permits.
Yes.
And which section would we think about putting that? Maybe just to get some thought to it, I guess one of the things I'm going to think about the most is.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Where, where the criteria for special permits would go, would it go in actually even a session?
You'd have to create a new subcategory, a new subsection in the section.
Okay.
Yeah, and you'd say, in addition to the criteria for all special permits, such and such, these additionals that we proposed as to where you have to apply with this. Well. Unless anybody wants to talk about this right now, I would look for a motion to just continue the conversation to our next meeting.
So move down. Certainly.
And unfortunately, I need to do the role call. Alvin?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Richard? Yes. And Rick, yes, so we're continuing this matter to our.
Yes, I finally found my mute button, yeah.
To our next meeting on, uh, 17th.
I'm sorry, just to check our agenda, but did you, this is the intent to have that?
Pardon?
Is the intent to have?
That's true, the beginning, yeah, we only have, we have one item on each end, right?
I think right now, yeah, I just wanted to.
Not really sure how complex that is.
Okay. I'll come ahead, because I don't think it's something that's.
Well, actually, so I think maybe, just to get that out of the way, let's get that out of the way.
Hi.
Let's take this.
Sit here.
I don't think I did, if I was an advocate, I probably would.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you for those who used that inside. We'll see you in two weeks. You have to suffer, you know. Okay, so just a couple of items on the business, CPC represented by the business on the agenda. Anybody that's seen the light and would like to volunteer for this? It's something that's really going to crop after, next year.
Yeah, it'd be great, we're supposed to have a designated one specifically for the lady boarders or whatever, statute. It's not necessarily completed or urgent per se, but it's not a, basically, like, just wishful, which is, you know, it's not a version of this. So it's permanent or spring, it's like, maybe you're creating, it's going to be a spring or a key, and then after the rest, half the rest of the year is not much, you know, there's not. So we, I'm going to say, we'll be on that.
So I would like somebody to volunteer, but there would have volunteers. Talk to me in between.
Rick, and I'm discussing how long this, I don't know, stay in the.
Keep talking back, everybody. On approval of minutes, I have to apologize, I did not.
It was me.
I should have, I could have been, so I would prefer that we defer this to the next meeting. And I actually don't even. Updates, Henry?
I would just, sorry. Just mentioned briefly, Thursday night, the boards and commissions forum was being added to, I think, our address from sort of a tailpool of members, members of the patient, like, so.
I'll be standing there behind the table.
The tables in the auditorium, city hall, and looks like the interest in defending.
If anyone wants to come in, they can. Is the boards and commissions workshop for information form or something?
Yeah, I think what they titled, exactly.
The whole auditorium is going to be filled with tables, specific for people to come up and talk.
Get information to get volunteers to the various boards, yeah, right? It's still sort of the usual process, but you're going to have to bear those. The UBS director started this week, so I'll be looking back at him now. I did, so I mentioned I want to get a little bit more discussion going on the infrastructure issues before we get to having any theories, you know, discussion what we're proposing for bill up, because that's going to be also discussion about what are we doing below overall, you know, other areas of the city or priorities too. So just making sure we're looking at the whole picture.
So, so any of that, there's that plotted funds, for grant funds specifically for MTA community stuff?
Yeah, I was planning on sort of back with you on that, and I thought perhaps what I could discuss with only SC or others.
I think we should, we should use as much.
As many resources, yeah, agreed, so I perhaps you like all of that.
And council?
There was a concept anyway presented to us back to a 4B project, an extra lane in all city routes.
Just sorry, the Affordable Housing Trust agenda.
They have in their, that attorney is, because I think that, I presume, certainly not in a systematic with the laws are there, but that one, again, is, is proposes, or essentially propose right now, not fully proposes a 4B, and that goes to the whole discussion of, you know, whoever you are, your super status, whether that product is fundamentally consistent as they're talking about the zoning district. So it's basically the level of the back end of High Street, that was one of the intentions of the High Street, overly district was to, you know, sort of the level of the areas to some degree. So this brings up that question of, you know, St. Harbor status, 4B projects, whether or not it's larva west, or extra later in the place.
So this is the same property that we, to the release of the covenant, being to the.
Yes, the roadway, the, you, you that belongs off an extra lane, technically speaking, what they're proposing is the back, the street address, the back of a High Street lot that's behind those lots, that they would propose the building on, buildings on, the reason that one was in question, sort of, and there was, they were purchasing that lot, they brought the question, and all the lots on that street apparently had other, or at least from the original subdivision, but it's technically, they're proposing the buildings of the lot behind it, and that lot would be used for access, is what they're proposing it.
And is that the Nice Street over the language?
It is.
No, that back part of it. And what is the scale of this?
They can talk about 16 units and say, or structures, something like that.
Mixed income or, or mixed income or?
No, mixed, I mean, they're not proposing all three of them, but I understand is, we're talking based on 12%.
Where were we?
So spring of next year, we're talking about March of next year, so I, you know, it goes to the usual discussion of, do we have a proactive plan, and this is one reasonable way. Or it's one where the other, where the council ends up on things like Brown School, and whether that mobilizes or allows the units permitted, you know, whether I think of control of any project or any others that they've got, you know, are those things that are permitted? You know, permitted if not constructed, you know, to make that status. We also don't have DSC, it's not still level of census numbers or urban numbers, it's a calculated. So we're unable to give an opinion about the work that we've got to generate to stay above that, same number of statements. We will circle back with you on information, I think the main point is that, well, we're, we don't typically bill all those units, right? And the branch was, they can easily cover units, we have a couple of big ones, but we're dependent upon the private sector to do certain things, but we probably should be doing, using the same harbor status, 4B status, be doing what we can do to maintain city barber status and keep zoning, because it's a more important place, applicable. And then targeting housing where we think it's appropriate in the right way. That's not to say that, you know, development in one of these, or certain areas that one or less physically is good there, or you couldn't be, it's just that the type of housing that comes permitted, you know, I'm not necessarily, you know, 4B is a way of permitting identity development, because it effectively allows development target also throws up a certain, you know, and that, I don't, I can't support that, or, you know, you know, the end of the spectrum, I think is what that was that. So that's, that's a good, I would have is that the clock is ticking now, or we need to be, I'm just that, for magic, that it requires a little signature and some time.
Do you have any sense of the third MCO project?
Route one, they're getting, they're working out a couple of things right now, and they're, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to be somewhere, especially with the master team, which is all this information that we had in there, so they're, they're making progress on that. They work over the last area, there's a little power cord, I guess, it's probably education, we're not, we're not there, we're. So I think they're making progress that they, it's a little bit, Lou and I spoke, I think yesterday or before, he's, it's a little bit based on the economy right now. He's sort of checking right now, he's hoping that things will kind of, you know, be in the right place, but he does want to roll from three lots away over to one, where the, the, you know, 166, one project, but it's still dependent on where the market is, the numbers, the clients, and, you know, right at that time. So he's, he's sort of keeping track of it right now, it's hopeful, but he's also saying, like, I can't say the fin of it right now, you know, starting to track it right after, that's what he wants to do, but it's, it's dependent on the finances I have on the back.
Where are they in the design process for them?
Well, with Route one, it's already got a little more here. So Route one, the Route one project, you have to ask about, right, right? So that's, that's the one, this one, are you?
Yeah, but have they done contract documents yet?
Oh, no, sorry, I don't know the details of how they're far there along with that piece of it. I know they've been making progress that piece of, that, I think, what he's done is most of the work at the architect, I don't, he doesn't, but I think he's done most of the work there. It's more just a question of when is he actually starting to ruin, you know, all the processes associated with that, so. I think the design work itself was.
I do.
Um, sorry. No, I think we, we mentioned earlier today, it's overnight park restriction of the lots, and just that relates to the, there isn't a formal restriction on overnight parking of the lots, but it brought up in relation to our 26th parkage discussion, short-term rent years, you know, that's a bridge downtown, surface market lots, maybe a little utilized, depends on your perspective of what you're trying to accomplish here, but parking management slash, what do you want from the downtown, uses, and how do the lots either satisfy the parking demand or displaced? Or, you know, all that is, you know, looking at it right now, but there's a, I think, a packet coming for this one day, there's a complication of a amendment to the general city code that would formally put a record restriction of parking in city lots, where it's been certain unofficial policy today, that has, you know, depending on perspective, pros and cons, or thought would be on the utilization of that lot, and potentially if there are residential units. Again, putting aside, we're going to discuss in future years versus old units. If you don't allow any parking, are we effectively pushing cars into residential neighborhoods? That's a question to ask, are we creating an artificial, you know, parking constraint in residential neighborhoods? I think that's worth while to have that discussion, I understand the desire to, parking, there's different perspectives on that, but that's one thing I would think it's nice to debate a lot, you know, that's why we have to share a parking question, so.
So when that, when that comes forward, will we go to planning and development or somewhere else? City Public Works and Services?
That's a good point, I don't, I don't, I don't think it would ultimately speaking right now, basically, the council has a space described in, I don't think that they would be saying this on playing developments, but I, there are a lot of there, and the fact that you said two committees were the, the whole capital discussed, but I wouldn't necessarily direct, expect this directly to play development, I would expect this.
We have to keep, keep tracking that.
And they haven't closed the, but I, yeah, but that's, that's still.
That's for planning development tomorrow night.
Correct.
The other questions? Updates, any events?
Just to let you know, May 17th meeting, I'll be Amsterdam for three and a half weeks, so I will not be able to attend.
Great, good for you. So May 17th, and also Heather's not going to be.
Why can't you call?
Because it'll be three o'clock in the morning.
I want to unplug, I want to completely unplug.
Also, what is, what is Don's last?
I'm mistaken, I think it's, the next one would be the very last one.
I thought, I thought you said you got two left.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So you're going to miss the party. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
To adjourn?
House secretary.
Thank you. I'll do the final roll call, Alvin?
Yes.
Bob? Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Richard?
Yes.
Yes, okay, see you in two weeks, some of you.